Creed Course School District Number Seventy-Six, Board of Education, meeting the whole meeting to order on September third of two thousand and fifteen. Pledge of Allegiance, please, may we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Linda Bailey?
Here.
Pam Griner?
Here.
Brenda Cable?
Here.
Rebecca Kern here. Valerie Reagan?
Here.
Judy Strong?
Yes.
Truly true. Absent.
Maybe that's how they wrote.
And we welcome our community attendees. Discussion item, press policies is what we're dealing with tonight. And Mr. Aldrich?
Yes, this is correct. This is our policy review and I just want to make you aware that Friday we received another packet of updated policies. So, once we have this done, we will start it all over again. Not as many this time, but these things move forward and when the General Assembly takes whim to change things, policies have to stay up to date. So, we'll look at those new ones as we go forward. So, I just wanted to tackle what we had on our plate and not add to it at this point. So, alright. The first policy for discussion would be four colon one four zero. In the yellow, if you have your yellow packet. This is Operational Service Section and its title is waiver of student fees. The recommendation, the changes were to footnotes only. The press, press policy guidance was changing some of the case law and some of the wording and some codification of the law in the footnotes. There were no substantive changes in the language. However, there were some comments and concerns for discussion regarding the eligibility criteria, which if you look on page two of three, there are bullet points. This is eligibility criteria. And it says, Superintendent or designee will give additional consideration where one or more of the following factors are present. And you can see those factors there. The suggestion was to delete the bullet points and just leave that as the top paragraph only. And the recommendation was, from superintendent, was no change. This criteria here, these criteria, give administration some objective reasoning for granting or denying the fee waiver. When a family does not qualify for free or reduced lunch, then this fee waiver, it would come into play and it would allow the administration to look at those factors in determining whether to allow someone to receive free and reduced lunch even though at that moment, they may not qualify under the federal guidelines. So, this is a, this is a policy and the criteria is something that is pretty universal across the state and so I just wanted, the recommendation was to, for no change.
So, basically, if the, well, this is appropriate, but let's say if Tamara texts her girls before they would not qualify for free lunch, but because of her sickness or her illness, being to the circumstances it was, they might then be given free lunch because of her type of illness. Is that where this would come into play?
Correct. You know, if there is an illness to the family, death, unemployment, emergency situations, things like that, work stoppages, a strike, something like that going on, that is envisioned as temporary, but could become longstanding. However, if it becomes longstanding, then obviously this, the family would then qualify under the federal standards later on down the road.
If I'm not mistaken, though, the superintendent or designee is the question, not the bullet? Or was it the whole thing?
It was the bullets. The bullets were the main, the main idea of the suggestion.
That makes sense why I asked that maybe we moved. First of all, this isn't for free and reduced lunch, it's just for other fees, is that correct?
It is for eligibility for all student fees, yes. But our student fee waiver is based upon free and reduced lunch.
Right. My only thoughts is taking was out where I was afraid if a parent in this situation read the bullets, then they would have an unfair expectation that you would approve it if they qualified for one. And it's not necessarily the case, it would be up to you to decide.
Right, consideration.
I was just trying to give you a little bit more of what I think. Because unemployment, I mean, as many people that are unemployed today, you know.
And just because maybe I might not, like, because my job doesn't mean my husband can't sustain us.
Right, exactly.
So, if I can say I lost my job doing the fee, you're not asking me to give you my W-2 or my household, which is...
Additional consideration, I think, might be our stance. Am I correct on saying that? That's where the CEO of the district will then take in consideration.
I realize that's what it says, but I was just afraid that maybe the parents would look at that and say, okay, I have an illness in my family, we're unemployed, it says right here that you're going to give me the waiver. And I know it doesn't actually say that, but that was my, that was my concern about waiving it.
Parents could.
Because it is optional.
It is, and it says, give consideration. And, you know, parents could look at that and say, you must, but that's not really the case. The superintendent would look at, you know, the entire situation and it wouldn't be just, you know, a one, a one, you know, someone coming in and saying, we want a fee rate, be waiver. And there would be conversation, I would think. You know, I wouldn't just say, well, yes or no, you lost your job, yes or no. Well, if your husband is the CEO caterpillar.
Oh, he's not. I thought he was like, would be like, I don't know.
But, yeah, it would be more of a, it'd be more of a, of a conversation. To take that out and remove it completely, while I would have an understanding of, you know, that these are some factors to look at, I don't know if, you know, in my absence or some other superintendent, you know, the next superintendent coming up, if there was nothing there to guide them, you're, you know, you're giving, you're not giving them really some kind of framework to work within, I guess.
There's no way you can go along with this?
No.
Well, and that was adopted back in December twenty-ten, which is six months after they first closed it, so it has been, sort of, there are not many changes, it has been, it's the same as what it was.
And it had designee in it as well, six months ago, or twenty-ten?
Correct.
So, how do you prioritize?
Um, no, it did not have designee, it only had superintendent. The reason designees needs to be in because, like we had in July, Mr. Aldrich was on...
In December. But this was updated July two thousand and ten.
Yeah, see, they didn't adopt it.
No, no, this is when it was here, this is the press policy.
Right.
That's what you guys have, right?
Right.
Okay.
They did it six months from this one.
Current policy. Gotcha, okay. And at that time, you took out designee?
It wasn't in. I bet they, I don't know why it wasn't there. It should be there because if something happens to a superintendent, as we had in July, and we have to come up with something right away, whoever he is in his stead needs to be able to have the opportunity.
Because he's an active superintendent.
Right, that's the designee. Who's ever standing in his place, in this case, it was Mrs. Williamson, so as the designee.
But she's still superintendent, so would that not call help? Wasn't she superintendent? I mean, we hired her as interim superintendent.
Okay.
In July, no?
Right, I, yeah, that, when I went into the hospital, I guess, is where Mrs. Strong's coming, coming from. When Mrs. Williamson had already kind of left the picture. So, there wasn't anyone except the superintendent. And to leave that just laying there without, without having a designee and making it just the superintendent, you're putting the district in a position where no one really has any authority at that point, except the superintendent, who may be, you know, incapacitated for eight days in the hospital or, you know, whatever the case may be, lost at sea. You need to have that control to be able to have a designee, somebody who is appointed, somebody who has, you know, the keys to the store. So, you know, it's my recommendation, you know, all through this, there were suggestions as to removing designee. And I would say that, that that just puts the...
It is there, too. Another sentence found, designee is there.
Right, right. Okay, so in our, in our current policy, it is there.
Yeah, it is.
Under that. And I guess, having that ability to appoint and authorize someone to act in that stead is, is really a necessary component to, you know, succession and planning for the district. So, that's, that would be my recommendation, is just keeping it.
Okay, so it means more or less that if you're not here, someone else, not that you're just going to say, I don't really want to control this, you're going to be my designee all the time, just in case someone comes in and has a problem.
Right, the superintendent is still fully accountable, even with the designee, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I misinterpreted. I thought it's going to be like, okay.
Oh, no, oh, I see.
No, I'm not doing this, I'm designated to someone else to take care of this.
Right.
That's how I interpreted.
Okay. And, but the superintendent, even if it's designated, like I have a food service director, and so all of those, you know, duties and responsibilities are designated to her, but the superintendent is still ultimately responsible and accountable for all working in food services or maintenance or secretarial. So, I think the legal, having that legal ability to, you know, be able to have a designee or somebody appointed to it is a necessary function, so, but...
And we really, we do want to be a little bit flexible, don't we, with economy and everything, and the way things are going, job market, on leaving these bullets? I have a problem with the bullets themselves. I was just trying to give him some ways so that they didn't come in and say, because it says this, I guarantee the weight.
Yeah.
That's why I was going, there is an AP, but it doesn't address it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't carry the weight, it was just my thoughts.
No, and it's a good, and it's a good thought, from what you're, from that, the thinking, yeah. But, this doesn't, anything in your policy, only, only unless it specifically says so in, in the law or the school code or federal law, there is no implied right of action under any of the policies, okay? You know, they can, they can complain to the state, they can do other things, but really there's no, there's no implied right of, of being able to sue the school district because of something that's, that's here. They can complain all they want to the state, whether they have the right or not, but I think this is, this is just one of those things where leaving as is seems appropriate to me. But, that's for the Board of Education to decide. So, how do you guys do this? Because I have, this is my first policy exploration with the board. Do you vote on, well, okay, we're not, we're not taking any kind of votes tonight, but when we get there, do you vote on each one individually or are we going to do it as a whole? We had some, it wasn't really confusion, but, but I wasn't really clear as to how we did it last time.
Consensus, just, just show hands of consensus as we're passing through.
Just have to do the second reading at the...
At the regular one.
Right. The next board. And then the ones that we, we maybe had a majority of a consensus, is the ones that will put...
On the consent agenda.
On the, yeah.
Okay.
You're going to have to do a first reading at the next reading. Not a second.
Right, I'm sorry.
First reading, yeah.
Oh, yes, right, yeah. Yeah, we did, we did the second reading on the other ones. So, this is a first, yep.
Right.
Good. Okay, let's, let's look at policies all year long.
Okay, so, do we want to do a hand consensus then at this one? Who feels this is okay?
I mean, with the, I think it's putting a lot of pressure on him, but it's fine.
All right.
He's good.
Uh, next policy is five colon two six zero. Give you a second, I need in your yellow sheets. This is professional personnel and the, the policy is regarding student teachers. Here, there was, this, this new change requires student teachers to undergo the criminal background checks and they also, they have to pay for it. Yeah, and pay the cost for his or her criminal history record check, whatever that is. I think it's, I thought it was eight dollars, but it might be more than that with the regional superintendent. So, they have to go to the regional office, twenty-five, he says from the audience, go here thirty. You're the only one here, don't bid against yourself. So, at the ROE's office, they go down, they pay their twenty-five dollars, they take their fingerprints and they get their checks and then they come, that comes back to us. What is here, one of the suggestions was to remove designee again, but also, there was a, kind of a question as to appointment of student teachers. And should the superintendent have, or the principal or someone have a, a more active role in placing student teachers in the certain, you know, certain areas with certain teachers, I suppose. So, I guess I would just open that up for discussion because I'm not sure what, what everybody would think.
Do you have a plan in place for student teachers and whose decision is it to put them in a classroom?
At this point, I'm not sure what the principals have done in previous years, but in other, other areas, other school districts, the teachers, the staff, our staff, they enter into an agreement with the universities that say, they, they notify the universities and say, you know, I am, I would like to have a student teacher in my classroom and they then receive credit for class, classroom tuition, those kind of things, from their offering of their classroom. So, it is a, it's an availability, so the teachers who want to do this, put their name on the list. The university goes through and they place student teachers with the teachers that are on the list, presumably on a first come, first served basis. In the past, I don't say, I won't say that, in other districts, there really hasn't, I don't know of districts that get involved in the actual, you know, picking and choosing of who gets and who does not get a student teacher, because then we've got, it could become a collective bargaining situation where we are putting students, teachers with certain, certain individuals and we are making determinations on who gets to be involved in the university program, who gets to have tuition credits, who gets to have CPDU credits. And so, most school districts just take a hands-off approach to any kind of placement, leaving that to the university to have talked to the staff members to see if they're appropriate and have the qualifications and credentials that they're looking to place students with.
Having been a graduate and having student teachers in my classroom, Bradley, I believe Bradley and I would also think other Western and Eastern, I think, seek out their, the teachers that have graduated because they're going to have somewhat of the same training that they're wanting to focus them on. And so, I, I believe that when those were placed in my classroom, I moved up the list of teachers available because I was a Bradley graduate.
So, you placed one there, one on that.
Yeah. And if you look at five, semicolon, one nine oh, it also continues to talk about it and it refers back, it referred us back to that also cross-reference to teacher qualifications. And so, that's when the superintendent or the designee would have to make sure that these teachers are appropriately certified and highly, highly qualified for the assignment. Like, if I was a math, you know, they wanted to put a math teacher in from Bradley, I'm not math, so that would be inappropriate, I wouldn't be...
But also with that, would you go in the same sense that if we had a first-year teacher, would we really want a student teacher with a first-year teacher?
They have to be tenured, no.
Okay, and then also, what about a parent?
Yes.
I mean, but what about a parent who says, my kid has a student teacher all year? I mean, do we, and that's another thing, do we limit it on how many student teachers they have a year?
I see.
I'm just thinking some criteria.
I mean, yeah, I mean, would you want...
The university has their criteria on limiting, I don't know, not limiting, but who they place student teachers with.
And so, that's the reason that the same teachers always have student teachers as that?
I don't know.
A lot of times, the same, same colleges are the ones that place there, so they're going to go back to...
To the teacher.
Yeah.
Is it just, do we want to look at that and see if a teacher has a student teacher or, I mean...
Are we on the dance floor? Yeah.
If you, if your child, would you want a student teacher?
You hire a child?
It says right here that they are not to be taught for more than four consecutive weeks.
In which one, the five, five, one nine oh?
Yes. So, are we going to continue that, is what I'm saying?
That's in place.
Okay, so, only four weeks and the child, and then that is a teacher cannot have that a student teacher? Because I thought, I was looking at...
Oh, no, that's just for child. That's if they're on one child only, that's not for the classroom.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, would we...
Okay, alright.
My whole question that brought this up was, we had a female student teacher last year with a male female teacher, and I just didn't get that.
Especially if you hire a male.
And so, I thought, what criteria do we have? Apparently, we don't, as a school district, don't have any.
It doesn't talk about that, it just talks about certified and highly qualified.
So, that's why I wanted to take designee out and it's all on the superintendent. It's up to the superintendent to find out if the same teacher gets a student teacher for more than four weeks and a male but female.
But the designee isn't one, is only through the superintendent, is my understanding, am I incorrect on that, Mr. Aldrich? You're the one that would designate someone taking your stand, your position if you were unable.
Right, that's where...
So, it's not just a building principal that steps up as a designee?
Yeah, a little explanation on the back page, says the ability to appoint and authorize staff to accomplish...
Right, so he doesn't need to mean that he's, I'm not...
I guess I'm not seeing the point, the problem so much with the male, female, as the, my child had a student teacher all year. Because we put males and females in the classroom together.
But then...
Generally, we hire a male teacher for a male student.
If that female couldn't go into that...
But he teaches girls in PE. The male teacher teaches girls PE and he can't go, yeah?
Then why do they have a male, female teacher?
For locker room supervision.
Oh, okay.
And for, you know, the, there are certain areas where, you know, the health, we have health, health class that is taught, you know, individually by male and female.
But the boys and girls take PE together, so...
Right, so it's a co-ed class.
So, if she could supervise in the locker room, why would we not just give some female? That's why I called.
But he can't supervise in the locker room either, you know?
With the boys.
But not with the girl.
Right, that's why we have two.
Our female was off a lot last year, remember?
All of those things, all of that.
Right, but...
I'm trying to really figure out what, what the question really is. Do we want, do we want the, the Board of Education, does the Board of Education want the superintendent to be specifically in charge of placing student teachers with specific staff members? Because if that, I guess that's the question. That's what I'm hearing you say, the superintendent should be the only one who puts student teachers in certain classrooms.
Isn't it your responsibility to know?
Yeah, it's my ultimate accountability, yes.
But if he's gone, July, he's gone.
I'm not worried about being gone, though.
And it's certainly not...
I know you're not worried, we didn't plan on him being gone.
Right.
No, the, the thing is that that's not normally done, universities, the teachers usually ask the universities or apply or whatever and then they get granted the...
Right, if you look, if you look at the policy two six, well...
The schools come to, the colleges come to the schools, say, can we, we have a junior high placement we need to have, do you have someone that we can place them in? Do you have alumni that we can place them in? And they know anyway, because they know where you go.
Right, if you look at, at assignment, which is the paragraph, you know, after the one we were actually looking at that had changes, it says, "The superintendent or designee shall be responsible for coordinating placements of all student teachers within the district. Student teachers shall, should be assigned to supervising teachers whose qualifications are acceptable to the district and the students' respective colleges or universities. A teacher may be eligible for CPDs for supervising or teacher education candidate." So...
And it's hardly changed, right?
The, right, there is no change in that paragraph where the superintendent is still, you know, responsible for coordinating placements. Well, the, the university representatives work with the principals and say, here are the teachers who said that they are willing to have a student teacher, where do you think this fifth grade teacher should be? And so, the principal works with the university representatives to place them there appropriately. And then the superintendent would get a list to see who has student teachers. There are specific regulations and, and requirements and limitations on what student teachers can do during their time. That's not for us to decide, that's the university's purview. If we tell them, well, you can have student teachers, but you can only, they can only be, they can only teach for two hours a day every other Thursday, the university's just going to drop us, okay? And if that's what you want, you don't want any student teachers, that's fine, too, okay? Doesn't matter to me that much. So, we have, there are those kind of, of limitations and, you know, accountability practices that are in there. Now, this thing with male, female gym teachers, we're talking about the teaching, we're not talking so much about supervision, alright? The supervision in the locker rooms, that student teacher who's a female is going to go in with the female teacher to be in the locker room for the supervision, to, to learn how to supervise in a locker room, I suppose. But when it comes to the actual, you know, instructional theology, not theology, theory in the classroom, it really doesn't matter if they're the male or female teacher when it comes down to, you know, the instructional portions of that.
Is there a portion in the new evaluation of teachers for student teachers, how they deal with... How they deal with student teachers?
I don't think so, but I don't know specifically. Um, I know that in, because I don't know what this committee has adopted, okay? Under the, under the Danielson model, which is what most school districts are looking at, there is no provision necessarily that talks about student teaching. So, and usually within the collective bargaining agreement or some other, you know, portion, it's, a teacher will not be evaluated during the time that they have a student teacher in their classroom. So it'd be the semester before or after, however that works out. So, or the principal should know where in the rotation that teacher is and say, well, she's being evaluated, he's being evaluated this year. I'd prefer not having a student teacher in there so that that teacher, teacher can have a fair representative evaluation.
I guess why I mention it is because some people I've read at Manage and I've seen some teachers aren't good at directing student teachers. So that's why my question came up.
Sure, sure.
And that would be just not between the college, but between the school district. And that's just part of what the principal should be looking at.
Right, I would hope that the principals can give, can give, you know, that kind of insight into, you know, whether or not that teacher is a good fit for a student teacher.
So again though, are we, so non-tenure teachers cannot have a student teacher, correct?
I don't think so.
Where's that?
Well, where's that written?
You're saying the college would not place them? Because I don't think we have anything in place.
Well, I believe it says right here though, um, their qualifications. So.
We don't write everything in policy because if we tried to write everything in policy, we wouldn't have time to do anything else because you can't, you cannot account for every minutia detail in a policy.
Well, that's exactly right, but qualifications and saying it has to be tenured are two different things. I mean, because what is qualifications?
Well, I would think, I would think.
Has he been there for three years?
Right, I would think that the, the superintendent and the superintendent and the principal would have common sense and professional responsibility to say, you know, that's a non-tenure teacher. Why would I put a student teacher with someone who I'm looking and evaluating twice a year to be, you know, to become a, a tenured teacher in this, in this district? Is it really fair to that student teacher, fair to that teacher to place that student there? I would hope that you've hired professionals who can make those kind of discretionary calls. And I would hope that the board would allow them to have that kind of, of professional responsibility. But if not, wrote it down, write it in.
What's in?
It's happened in the past, we can.
The past?
Well, yeah, where, where you can.
Because that's all the board does, so.
And it's recent past.
Yeah.
And again.
I don't know these.
They limit the number of student teachers they have. I mean, if it was my child, I don't think I would want a student teacher.
Well, when it comes down, well, right, and they're not in there for the whole year, they're only in there for one semester. The student, the teacher could have two student teachers.
Exactly, right.
Then that, see, that to me is professional discretion. And if you didn't have that last year or previously, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. You can write it in there, but I guess, you know, I would hope that, I, I guess I would hope that, that you would trust or learn to trust, um, you know, my professional discretion and judgment. And if not, write it in.
You just said in the previous policy, you better write that down because the next superintendent might not be able to use those bullet points. They might need them, same thing here. The next superintendent may not have that direction unless it's written down.
Really?
Then let's write it all down. You're right, let's write everything down. I, that's, where's your balance? Where is your balance on, on what you put in policy and write down every specific detail and what you know? I think that this is something where I'll argue about parents and their financial, you know, situations, that, that I would like some guidance. When it comes to whether or not we're placing students with non-tenure teachers, or student teachers with non-tenure teachers or, or people who, you know, um, maybe are not the best fit, I think that's professional discretion. But if that's what you want, I've got no problem putting it in here.
Well, there's also two types of student teachers. So one could be a twelve, a twelve week and one could be a, a three or four or six week. So, um, and that has to go back to the college of what they're.
What they come out and tell us they want, so.
Maybe this is silly.
No?
Um, so to get to the press policy. It says here that a board member wanted a designee removed and then you were suggesting no change. Can we do that part and then discuss the whole student teacher thing at a different point? When we have more information on what's taking place and how to go forward, or is that not perfect?
No, that's, that's acceptable is.
Because it sounds like maybe there should be some things written down.
Well, if we don't write it down now, will they ever get it down?
It, it just comes back up on the scene again. Tenured, we could put that in fairly easy.
Doesn't everybody agree that?
There should be a tenured teacher.
And, um, only one, um, student teaching, um, per year, um, just period. Yeah, well. Yeah, you have enough, um, teachers in the building that are qualified after being tenured. That shouldn't be a problem, but I'm not at the college, so I don't, you know, I don't know their directive of why that happened. They had to have a reason why that happened.
I understand, and you're being very kind toward the college that you don't want to accommodate that.
Right.
But we also have to protect our students. So sometimes schools can get inundated with more student teachers than what they really need. So if we put that in there, that way it gives superintendent, the principals to say, it's our policy, the teacher, we only have one a year, sorry.
No, per classroom.
Yeah, one per classroom, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
And that way it gives them a little bit of out as well.
Do they ever have more than one per classroom?
At a time. At a semester. Only one student teacher for the whole year for one, for a specific teacher is what we're discussing. Like, um, Holly, um, Holly is a student teacher, they're wanting to bring somebody in for art and they wanted to do it all year long. Well, we're saying that's not good to bring in two student teachers to teach Holly's class when we pay Holly to have a relationship with those students and to teach them her skills that we hired her for.
Right, because by the time she's tenured, she's an expert, so do you want an expert teaching your child or a novice all year?
Well, they're observing though.
But I thought some of the student teachers also help students maybe that were having issues and not just teaching the whole entire class, is that what you're?
That's why this is in here. There is in five point one nine oh, I think, where it's only, um, on one child.
Four weeks.
So many weeks, yeah. Turn my page, so I think that's what that one said.
Second set of eyes and ears, but lots of times they, according to the college guidelines, they have to take over the classroom. And the teacher, doesn't she have to be out for so many hours a day?
Just like when they call for it.
Right, depending on what point they're at.
For a short few weeks.
Right.
But they're accountable and they're being supervised by a college professional.
Oh, yeah, I thought that, yeah. But they're taking over the classroom management and they're teaching and educating the child.
They would be pulled, and I have heard of them being pulled if it was done incorrectly.
Well, unfortunately that hasn't happened, I mean, unfortunately, it has, it has, oh, it hasn't happened.
No, I'm saying, unfortunately it hasn't. Alright, so what did I do?
So, we're all in agreement, tenured should be in there, okay? A tenured teacher instead of a one or two or a three-year teacher. And, um, anybody?
Where are we proposing the, the place that?
You can put right there, student teacher should be assigned to tenured supervising teachers.
I'm not with you, but.
Where are you, assignment?
Right.
Assignment, okay.
Just put the word tenured before supervising teacher.
Okay. And then what do, what is the wording that you would like to see for?
Should be assigned to tenured.
Anybody got that wording? Just putting one student teacher per teacher per year? Um, hold on.
Only tenured teachers may have student teachers and only one per year. I'll definitely just have one sentence.
Student teacher should be assigned to tenured supervising teachers.
And have only one student teacher per year.
Per school.
Per school year.
Of course, okay, yeah, per school year, sorry, you're absolutely right.
Mr. Aldridge, would that be relevant to us in any way?
Um.
I knew it, so I'm asking.
No, no, that, right, um, you know, the limitations, no. Um, you know, other than, other than the fact that, you know, um, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think through what, any kind of union issues there might be. But I suppose, I suppose we don't worry about those and if the union brings it up or if something does come up, then we can take care of it. You know, in any of those times in the future.
As long as we do those, we don't, we're not. We can readdress some of these things later, but.
It's only a reading for this month, it's just a reading. And it's a policy of the district, so I don't know how the union issue is, but I.
Okay, breaking into union rules? Any contracts?
Well, like I, like I said in the beginning, when we start, when you start narrowing it, narrowing it down and we start where one person, the superintendent, has the ability to dole out an individual benefit to certain people, then there could be union ramifications going in the road, yeah.
But that's not really a benefit necessarily.
Well, sure it is, it's about a what, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollar benefit?
But that's to that.
Because you're giving them a college credit.
Who?
You're denying.
The person who has a student teacher. They're receiving college.
But that's not within, but we don't hand the college credit out, college does.
But you're still being it.
We're controlling the opportunity.
But that's not in the contract that we give them that.
I mean, it's our kids' education.
We pay for so much education anyway for teachers.
True.
So that's not within the limit, that's not in that.
Hmm, yes, non-tenure teachers are in the union, so. No, um, that, that is, whether or not it was, it's not a, I don't think it's a benefit under the collective bargaining agreement such as a benefit within the agreement. However, it is a benefit that the district is now controlling and we're putting one person in charge of dealing and doling it out individually. And I'm just bringing that risk to you, whether you believe it's real or imaginary, it's, you know, it's okay. Um, and it may not even be an issue, but that's what I'm trained to do. So I bring those risks to you.
And they should probably come in the reading anyway if somebody, if the union had a dispute.
Well, it's only going to be a dispute when it comes up, when, when you have a third-year teacher who wants that credit and we don't give it to them, then the union will be.
But wouldn't the unions?
Just because we say it doesn't mean that it's not a denial of a benefit.
Well, wouldn't that the teacher have two last year and the other teacher didn't have any? I mean, wouldn't that be just as much as a?
But we didn't pick that, we didn't choose it.
This is just a policy without choosing, so we're going by policy.
Okay, really think the designee in or taking it out? I don't care, but what are we doing?
Oh, I don't know where, I don't know where the change was.
Oh, I know.
Because he said he would be the site. No, that's why I'm trying to clarify.
We might only have one candidate for science or math or social studies that are qualified. Is probably why, um, a placement was done twice. There's only one qualified, qualified person in the junior high with social studies. There was only one in math.
Right.
So that's why. And then the college, of course, is putting out math and you want to be in that because if you see somebody that you like, which you've done a lot, you keep them as teachers because you see their, their work. So that might be why we shouldn't have put in one.
Other thing is, is but do you want your child to have?
Right.
A teacher who's just learning the whole year.
They're coming out with the best practices, they're coming out with the newest things from colleges.
But when you have a kid that has all A's on her report card except for an F in that one class and the student teacher's like, everybody has an F.
Well, something should have been done on that, yeah, I don't know why that wasn't done.
I would settle it, but I'm saying.
Or you did settle it.
Oh, yeah.
Or your child.
Yes, it was my child.
But I'm just saying, for your child, what about the other thirty?
Exactly. How many other parents went in and said, this isn't right? Because look at my child's all A's except for one F. I mean.
Well, in that case, the teacher also is the one that is observing who's getting what grades. Okay.
It's in the middle world.
Which goes back to the principal, which eventually falls on this man's shoulders.
Right. That's why it should be in policy. And then the parent can take it in. Mr. Aldridge, you know, look.
Okay. But you are limiting then.
We are, I understand.
We are colleges to bring somebody in. And you want to observe, especially in those classes that you don't have many people that are qualified. You want to be able to pick from choice.
But you also want, but it costs you, exactly. You also want some kid taught by an expert versus the novice.
Right.
You've got two novices that are observing this, I mean, two professionals.
I could end this real easily, you just say, the district will not allow any student teachers in the district at all. That's.
Well, we don't want it that way.
We just want a budget.
Okay, you just want.
Can we go for just the one part of it then?
Which part?
Just the tenured and not do the whole year.
I mean, you.
You want the whole year? You want the whole year?
I think one is, I guess, sufficient.
Yeah.
Supervising teachers shall only be allowed one student teacher per school year.
Did you have, I didn't ask you, but it seems like others have an opinion.
President, did you have an opinion?
No, I said I'm just taking it in and listening, so.
We have some strong, strong reasons, so. Are we ready to leave it in?
When you, when you have a child that does well, two would be okay, but when you have children that struggle, they cannot recover from having two.
And there's teaching styles are different.
And I have kids that struggle and they would not have recovered from what the other one threw.
Well, and you have teachers.
They could not have recovered from that.
And the teaching styles are different from semester to semester then, but kids just get used to this one student teacher, thinking, okay, this is what she wants, this is what we're going to do. Then the next semester you have another student teacher, it's like, oh my.
I think we've heard the same thing, so.
We're here to educate, we're here to appease that.
Alright, the only other thing that I have question about because I don't think I've heard a real answer was the designee part in this section. Superintendent or designee shall be responsible for coordinating placements of all student teachers within the district.
I think we should leave it because if something again happens, somebody else needs to be able to take the charge and make the decision.
As long as you agree that that's what designee needs.
Right.
That he'll do it unless he's thinking back.
I agree with you.
No, it's the principals.
Right.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
But he's ultimately responsible.
But he's responsible.
Right, right.
He is responsible.
So if somebody gets two in the same year, you can be mad at them.
I'm not going to be mad at them, but I'm just like.
She sent them an email.
You know, we're not following policy again. I heard the children.
Alright, so is designee in or out?
In.
In.
It did, yeah.
Alright, um, see.
An emergency consensus, so probably for children.
Yes, we already did.
We did?
Yeah, I asked everybody.
She went around the table now.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Sealing revised language. Sorry, just want to make sure I've got my notes here because I've got to take these back and make it all happen. Alright. Policy five, colon, three, three, zero, three, three, zero, which would be the next one in the packet. Sick days, hard, uh, I'm sorry, educational support per. Sick days, holidays, I'm sorry, educational support personnel, sick days, vacation, holidays and leaves. Um, under holidays, the press, the press recommended changes, under holidays, changes the word from receives to has. Receives to has.
Is that vacation then instead too, instead of holidays?
Well, no, the, oh, I'm sorry, the underline strike out is at the top of page three or four, it says holidays at the top.
Thank you.
Unless the district receives a waiver, they've changed that to unless the district has a waiver or modification of the school code, allowing it to schedule school on a holiday listed below. Okay, so, school districts are able to submit to the state board of education waivers in order to have school take place on any of those listed holidays. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans, all of those, now, most, let me think about it. A lot of school districts have waivers for Veterans Day, Kesmire Pulaski Day, Martin Luther King Junior's Birthday. Some of them do Abraham Lincoln, eh, because they take Presidents' Day, um, so school districts have a very inappropriate to their holidays and getting waivers. The issue for this school district is not whether you change the word from receives to has. The issue is that in the collective bargaining agreement for the support staff, there are holidays that are listed. And those holidays are.
It's our, it's our current policy. Can I interpret that, I'm sorry, I didn't interpret it yet. I, I think it says what we have, only without the marks in.
I think it just says refer to collective bargaining agreement.
That's what it used to say.
Can we continue?
That's why we look at the collective bargaining agreement and try to find the holidays here.
Oh, it's much different.
Like, they're not called. They're not called holidays in the collective bargaining agreement.
It's much different.
Yes, it is, uh, the current policy in, well, last amendment was March two thousand nine. Okay, and under leaves of absence, so it is, it is different from, you know, vacation, holidays, sick days, vacation, holidays and leaves, it's called leaves of absence still. And it outlines a number of leaves, but sick and bereavement days, holidays under this section, under the, the current creed core policy says, vacation, I'm sorry, holidays, please refer to the collective bargaining agreement between the Creed Core Service Personnel Association, IEA, NEA, and the school board. So, it's a, it's a reference back to the collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining agreement for support personnel says, um, additional paid days, additional paid days. Full-time twelve-month employees shall not be required to work, but shall receive pay for the following days. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Lincoln's Birthday, Kesmire Pulaski's Birthday, Good Friday Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, half-day pay for the day before Thanksgiving, provided students are not in school, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, oh, I'm sorry, New Year's Eve, one half-day pay. In the event that any of these paid days fall on a Saturday or Sunday, there will be no additional pay except for Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, and New Year's Eve, one half-day pay. If the district requests a waiver and receives it for any of the aforementioned days, it will be considered a student attendance day and the employees shall be required to work a regular scheduled day with no additional pay. All right.
But you, upfront, you had a twelve-month employee, none of our, none of our personnel are twelve-month employees.
Yes, we do have some twelve-month employees, yes, we do.
The janitors, they have their own, they're part of this group.
They are part of this group.
And we had a conflict this past year because of this, because of the janitors.
Yes.
Nine-month employees, because they're, they're now separated, in the collective bargaining agreement, they're separated from twelve-month employees to nine-month employees. So, nine-month employees shall not be required to work, but shall receive pay for the following days. And we go through all of the days again, we go through, in the event these fall on a Saturday or Sunday, in the event there's a waiver. The issue with the nine-month employee is that the Independence Day holiday is not paid for a nine-month employee, only for a twelve-month employee. The issue came when we had a nine-month employee who, and this is outside beyond the policy, okay, so we're not really talking about the policy, but the application, I suppose, of this section. Nine-month employee who was assigned and appointed to work during the summer for summer employment, all right, as a, um, summer custodial help. The nine-month employee, on their regular employment basis, would not have received Independence Day as a holiday. Right? The individual, the employee, was working as a, as a summer employee. The employee asked for, um, pay for Independence Day. Okay? And it was my determination that being a nine-month employee, you're not entitled to Independence Day as a paid holiday. Being employed as a summer worker is not a guarantee, it's not a part of your normal employment. So, you're not, under the collective bargaining agreement, you're not entitled to that holiday to be paid. Okay? Had that discussion with Mrs. Smallberger, and at least at that time, she agreed. I don't know if that agreement is still there or not, but she agreed, because I said, okay, I'm willing to look at this because we have, uh, an opportunity with the collective bargaining agreement being up for renegotiation. It's something that we can discuss, because there isn't anything that addresses someone who's employed as temporary employee during the summer. But, the way I was looking at the contract, and because this person was employed into the nine-month employee, they're not entitled to holiday pay during that, for that day. So.
And also, um, had a problem back in December, I believe, our, um, our New Year's Eve had a problem, do you remember that? There was something this past year that we had the same problem, and it was with the janitorial staff, I'm sure, because the day fell wrong.
Like Saturday or Sunday?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but that's, that's accounted for, so I'm, I'm not sure what that issue was.
Okay.
But this one was, uh, addressed in that way. Now, the collective bargaining agreement addresses waivers of school holidays, all right, so that part is in there. And essentially, for the district's policy, um, while it's antiquated, it's still, um, it still fits within the law, so that's why I said, no real recommendation. And we wouldn't have to make any changes for the word receives or has, so there wasn't anything really to do with this policy.
So, we cover in this old one, we cover everything that's here, that the, since we have a big panel putting this together, is why I hate to say, oh, let's keep it the old, when they've done all of this work, there's some reason they have to put all this work together.
Usually because those leave days and, and because of school waivers and, you know, the impact that you don't know from date, you know, from year to year, whether or not you're going to get a waiver or not get a waiver for holidays, those usually aren't included in the collective bargaining agreement, they're addressed in the policies. So, you know, your, your old policy addresses it by going back to and pointing and referring back to the collective bargaining agreement, it has the waiver language in it, that's really all I care about, um, so.
Consensus, do we keep the, yes?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. And nobody wants to go with the new and, and just change what we think needs to be changed.
What do you want with it?
I heard, um, Mr. Aldridge say he was comfortable with it because we're covered, so that's a lot of work to change.
Comfortable wasn't really the word, I could, it, 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 it meets the law, it meets the legal qualifications.
Okay.
No recommendation on my part.
So, we're not going to, we're not gonna accept this one, good for a reading.
Keep old.
Keep the old.
All right, next one, policy six, one, ninety, instruction. Six, colon, one, ninety, instruction, next page, extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Uh, the press recommendations were changes to the footnotes, and we'll see over here that they added, um, a reference to the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights concerning participation of students with disabilities in extracurricular activities. Uh, that was the only reference that, or the only change that was recommended by the press policy. There were suggestions to insert academic criteria for participation section, including footnotes five and six, and delete the high school reference. Your current policy does not address academic criteria for participation, so, um, you can see here that it said, consider adopting some standard. Now, the student handbook provides, a student athlete will not be eligible for the following reasons, he or she is not passing in all subjects. The board of education can adopt the standard now and implement it in the fourteen, fifteen school year. Um, since we already have sports that have already started, we, it's really not good practice to go and and implement something and start it when the students didn't have any notice of, of what the policy was. But, um, I, I would recommend some kind of standards, ladies, because to say not passing in all subjects really doesn't give a, you know, doesn't give a standard for the building principals or the athletic director to, to look at, and I believe a standard is in place here, and I would like that because there's been case law regarding this. We've had courts interfere in school district business regarding whether or not students are eligible. So, this is one time when I think it is appropriate to have a, a set of criteria. So, we would need to delete four high school students in that section and then implement, uh, one of the, you know, one of the, the standards, or, you know, the alternatives here are footnotes five and six. You can see at the bottom, uh, footnote four says elementary district should omit this paragraph, number, uh, is four. But, since we do have, uh, athletics in our grade school, we are K three.
That's mainly fifth and eighth.
Yes, yes.
So, sixth, then?
Okay, sixth or eighth, okay, yeah.
I think they're gonna play basketball.
Okay, so the middle grades.
They turn.
Part B, we'll just put it as part B.
Why can they play basketball but not baseball?
If they have girls' basketball, then they have a fifth grade team, don't they? A fifth, sixth grade team, and a seventh.
I thought they could.
A fifth, just, I think it's just a fifth grade team.
They usually try to select a couple of different grades.
Well, no, I mean, they can't, I don't think they could play, they can't play on the, no, they can't play on the seventh and eighth grade team. The fifth grade can, the sixth grade can, but do they have a fifth grade team, don't they?
Not a team, but I believe they try to select.
They have fifth grade boys' basketball and fifth grade girls' basketball.
Yeah, they put the sixth grade for basketball and the seventh grade for girls'.
I thought they just decided that, cause like, the girls can't do cheerleading or warrior dance anymore.
Right, or volleyball.
Or, or they can't.
Fifth graders.
Fifth graders can.
Fifth graders don't want their cheerleading or.
Or volleyball, or seventh and eighth grade team, but they could have play on the fifth and sixth grade team. So, they do have sports, but it's very limiting, it's just like basketball, I think, fifth and sixth grade basketball and fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball, girls' basketball. They should be passing, should it be a C that's our getting?
I was gonna say, passing is.
Passing a D.
Is D, I would think, right, I think it should be a C.
Alternative two, I believe, first is the one we wanna select, can we have any agreement on that, or is there a better one? And that's where we then select.
It must be eighteen, a passing grade, or minimum grade up, so the one that's like, might go, or a minimum grade up.
A minimum grade up.
Yeah, because the grade point averages.
I think a C, but is that too harsh?
A C.
If we set ours higher, I think we'll see the academics. I think it's gotta start here.
I mean.
We have to expect more out of our kids than D minus.
Oh, yeah, because to me, I mean, I expect a lot more out of my kids than.
Okay.
But if you're on special one, you're getting a D.
But it's still okay because there wouldn't be a capacity, so a C.
Special ed criteria.
Right.
Based on child.
Right.
So, when you get the parent coming screaming because his child can't play basketball because he has a C minus or a D plus, you're gonna hold with your C?
I think it's still a C.
I haven't agreed with you, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's still a C.
Well, then that's a C minus.
A C minus.
A C is a C, whether it's plus or minus.
Right, as long as it's a C.
Okay.
But I.
I don't think it should be higher than that, not right now.
I think a D is not acceptable.
Pardon?
A D is not acceptable.
Or they, because C's not acceptable.
Whether that is what we're discussing though. I think we're all in agreement on the C.
A B for some kids is really hard.
I think a B is probably right now.
C is average.
C is average.
Right, I, I told them every time.
And it might help him work, help it better.
Some kids really struggle just to get the C.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so we're in agreement on alternative two with a C.
Okay, so a C minus is acceptable, a C, and you need to, you can dispel it out from the policy. Students must maintain a passing grade.
Above D.
It says a minimum, or a minimum grade of C.
C minus. C minus or above.
Of C, then if they say above D, then they can say D plus.
C minus or above. I don't, I don't see the point, C is a C.
Because we had someone one time that did not interpret it that way. It was mine to make it that way.
Yeah, that's true, some people would not let them play with a C minus.
Because they look like a C minus, C, C plus.
Maybe unfortunately, yes, that's what happens.
But that's the parent you're talking about.
No, no.
Some teachers, yeah.
Or the teachers. You've got too many variables in what you're saying, so you need to spell it.
Some people interpret things, I interpret things differently.
Students must maintain a passing grade.
I'm just saying.
Minimum grade of.
Minimum grade of C minus or above in each course, receiving.
Okay.
And then you have to, you don't even need the or above, just the minimum grade of C minus.
Yeah.
And then each course?
Yes.
I would like to see it, but I know where you're going.
It says in each course, the student is a.
Is that what you wanna do?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, what is... You're, you're sitting over there like the Cheshire Cat knowing something and...
What do you know when that...
Okay, parents in the audience screaming. If my child got a D in PE, does PE count?
It should be C.
Does band count?
If they're not athletic enough to get a C in PE, they should be boy basketball.
But you know it's because...
Does health count because how?
It has maybe five grades.
Yes.
Listen, if we set the standard right, then they're, and they're gonna have advanced notices as two thousand four, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, I don't know. Then they're gonna know in advance.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to tell you, we've been here, done this.
Your girls play high school, right?
Yes.
What do they have to have in high school?
I have no idea.
Does anybody know what they have to have in high school?
In, in the high schools, it's usually a grade point average, so it's very specific. And it's usually two point zero. Because there is a no pass, no play requirement at the high school level through the high school association. We don't have that, that entity to worry about. So you have a lot of, a lot of variables and a lot of, um, different ideas.
What does IESA require? Isn't it just passing?
Yeah.
Pass.
Okay.
What we have.
So when most of our kids are either on the honor roll, are on the principal's honor roll, or I don't see it being a factor, none of the kids fail in this district. I mean, I don't think C is being a factor. I think they'll be fine.
But are you gonna include everything?
Like, okay, is there a grade given for encore? Holly, do you know?
It's pass fail.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
In each course.
Right.
And?
Yes.
Yeah, they did great. Just fine.
I have no problem with it. I'm just trying to cover all the issues that have been left in the past.
I'm thinking, yeah, it's optional class.
Yeah, they've selected it, so they should better be pushing themselves to get a good grade.
I see you're loving all classes.
Yep.
So you want to go with there you go.
C minus or above.
Yeah.
And it says each course, so.
And that is consent.
Yep. One more thing, it also says down here that what would happen if they don't?
There's an X though.
Okay. And they'll, they're stopping there.
Alternative one, oh.
Any student participant failing to meet the above academic criteria shall be suspended from the activity for blank calendar days or until the specified academic criteria are met, whichever is longer. So footnote six is where you would be looking at. Students shall be suspended from the activity for blank calendar days or shall be suspended from the activity until the specified academic criteria are met, whichever is longer.
The second one, until they can bring it up to like...
You don't mind the second one, do you?
No, that's not...
No, I said, how do you want? I can go for seven days because I have seen a child be on the failure report on Friday and mom goes in and complains and they have an A on Monday.
That's because they turned in their work.
Right.
Where they wouldn't turn it in otherwise.
If they didn't turn it in, they don't deserve to play for that week.
Oh, because then they might miss a game. Yeah, they do miss, I think they need to miss a game.
I think seven, I think seven days is good.
I think seven, I think seven days was a little harsh.
I think that's what the high school does, so maybe it is too harsh. It's week to week. If you're not eligible on Friday, you're not, they don't open the games next week.
Aren't we doing this for the grade semester?
No, it's week to week.
Yeah.
This is week to week.
Yeah.
A grade Thursday night, grades are figured, reports go out to the teacher on Friday.
So you still need until not only seven days, but the grade has to be C plus, not C minus or above. It's gotta be both. They can't just, okay, you've still got a D that you're gonna play. That's not what we're saying.
No, no, it's just saying if you are suspended, once you're not eligible, then you're gonna set out seven days regardless.
Okay, alright.
And then at the end of that seven days, if you're eligible, then you can play.
Okay, if you're eligible.
Are you want students to go to...
If, okay, so... I guess I'm hearing you guys combine this whole thing. So not only is it seven days, seven calendar days, and until the specified academic curri- curricular are met, whichever is longer, right? You're saying they gotta be both of them.
Like Holly said, the, the eligibility goes in on Thursday night. If they're not eligible, eligible to play on that report, then they're not gonna be able to play until the next eligibility report the next week.
Okay, did you see the last line of that though? I think what you're wanting is in there. They're gonna miss a ball game because it's gotta be the longest.
What she's saying though, okay, so my kid isn't eligible because she forgot to turn in thirteen assignments. So I go in there screaming and yelling.
I think they're on thirteen.
And here are her thirteen assignments that she didn't get done. So that teacher puts those in and bam, her grade goes up to a D.
On Monday.
On Monday.
But if you look at the, if you look at the last line, it says, no, it's gotta be the longer one.
But we don't have the longer one yet.
But we, we didn't put in the days yet.
If we put in the seven calendar days or until the sp- specified academic criteria are met, whichever is longer, whichever is longer is in there.
That's alternative one or two. You gotta pick one or the other.
See, we hadn't picked that yet. That's what we're... Alternative, right, but then it says...
So alternative one omits the rest of the sentence. In footnote six, it says, if you pick the calendar days, omit the rest of the sentence. If you pick alternative two, it says shall be suspended from the activity until the specified academic curri- criteria are met. That's why I'm saying you guys are combining them and that's, that's what you're wanting.
So we just need to put for seven days because then they look at the eligibility report and they're still not eligible, they miss another seven days. So we just take out Thursday. Right, so we just take out the last sentence and just put shall be suspended for the activity for seven days.
Whichever is longer, so if that gets us the seven days that we're hearing. If they're not academic criteria, then at the end of seven, they're not...
Or until the specified, it's gotta be, it's gotta be and, it can't be, or whichever is longer there, I guess is where you're pointing back to. Whichever is longer, so that they can't come in on Monday and say the specified criteria is met.
Yeah, we want the seven days.
Seven days, eight...
Six.
I think it's six.
It's calendar days.
I know.
Six calendar, because that would give you Thursday to Wednesday night.
Right, and then when they run the report on Thursday, if the kids eligible again, they should be able to play Thursday night.
I, that's what I was trying to figure, make sure that they were, they could be refigured on the next Thursday.
Right.
Are, so that's how... Well, maybe Friday's seven days, Thursday to Wednesday would be seven days. I don't know. That's what I'm wondering.
Maybe Tuesday is seven days, kind of. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
I found Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So on Thursday, when the teacher calls it out, they can qualify and play.
Right.
Right, right. So that's seven calendar days.
Okay.
So that's what I need.
Alright, I've been, I've been suspended for seven days. I didn't meet the specific criteria.
And?
It says, or until the specified criteria are met, whichever is longer.
That's part you need to take out, you just need to stop it after the calendar days period.
But then you want them to have the grade of the C.
But then after seven days, he still doesn't have his grade up, so he's still suspended.
He's on another seven days.
If he's not eligible, he's gonna be out for another seven days. So he will continue to be out.
You don't think they graded, well, I did my seven calendar days, I'm going in until next week when you look at me again.
I think you're absolutely right.
What else do you want to say?
Could we just say the seven calendar days and the specified academic criteria have been met or something?
Yeah, yeah. I think so. You need to make sure that they know after those seven days, they have to met the academic criteria.
And forget about whichever is longer then.
Just take that out. But then that says or.
She says the and.
Put and.
They have seven days to get it up. And no shorter. So they wait till the sixth day.
Just a suggestion, if somebody could remember, this probably needs to go home to the parents next year. We have the packet and ready for school, so that everybody knows about all this, right?
It needs, it needs to be, yeah, a notification, it needs, yeah, it needs to be some discussion, needs to be a change on the website. Um, we can send notices home to fourth graders incoming and...
Well, could we even, once it's adopted and a child does this this year, send home, this is what's gonna happen next year. So we want to give you...
I mean...
Could we do that? It's policy.
Of course we can do it. Um, so... I guess, I guess, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't wanna someone to blow up because they won't see that this is gonna happen next year. They won't see that part. They'll just see my kid suspended. So I can imagine we would field a number of calls.
Just wait till the summer.
Yeah, we give them plenty of notification and it's in the handbook and it's going over by the athletic director and the coaches because they're the ones that are gonna have to implement it. It'll be something that the principals will have to discuss with the teachers because now this is a change as to rather than just, what was it? Just passing. Um, so the teachers are gonna have to put a little bit more into it. Um, so it's something that, it will have to be rolled out, yeah, yeah, the notification, that's, that's fine. I just don't think we wanna confuse people this year, you know? I think that'll create more confusion than...
It'll still roll out this year. But as we try to mount our policy stuff this year.
Well, yeah.
But we don't have it in place until...
You're right, it'll, it's gonna be on the, it's gonna be on our website tomorrow or the day after, so, you know, all of this discussion will be there. Alright, so any student participant failing to meet these cri- academic criteria shall be suspended from the activity for seven calendar days and has met the specified academic criteria.
Oh, so we've got it must meet the specified academic criteria?
To meet these academic criteria.
Failing to meet.
I think we got it set with and.
Okay.
Ready for one? All in agreement?
Yes.
I'll, I'll wait there, see what the structure of the sentence really comes out to be and see which one's a better grammatical thing. Alright, okay. We have now addressed policy number four. Or the fourth policy. No, next is six colon two two zero, instruction. This is a new policy, it's entirely new. Um, it's something that has been discussed and brought about by most other, or no, it's not. Trying to articulate it here. Basically, the rich school districts in the suburbs wanted to allow their kids to bring in their own iPads, their own Androids, their own, you know, personal robots and, you know, everything that they could think of. That's technology devices, alright? Because the, because ninety percent or a hundred percent of their kids in their, in those schools have those devices, it was believed, or it is believed, that utilizing them makes sense in classroom instruction. So this policy was devised to kind of allow those students to bring that technology in and to cover school districts for any kind of liability, any kind of use, any kind of, you know, yada yada, as we had cell phones back in the nineties. So this was a brand new policy and the suggestion that was put out was do not adopt, discuss thoroughly and against the handbook. Um, that probably is correct, it is probably against the handbook because it's a brand new one.
We have a policy in place with the same number.
Yes. And...
It doesn't address technology.
All the textbooks?
Yes, it's all on textbooks.
Okay, this is something that...
And it's the very same number.
Is this something, it was adopted in nineteen eighty-five, is this something that just wasn't revised and kept up?
Right, it's all I know. It just has the same number.
Has the same number.
Yeah.
So because we have made revisions along the way and haven't kept strictly with the press policy, um, that's something that we can, we'll just have to adopt the numbering system if, you know, this is adopted. So I don't see that as a big deal.
Just renumber that old one?
I don't, I don't think that that's too much of a problem to renumber, reda- uh, reassign. But the real, the real issue is, you know, my recommendation was to study the topic with the staff to determine the advantages and disadvantages uh, about the BYOP policy, bring your own technology.
Well, I'd say something. I realize that like cell phones and things like that are probably inappropriate at school. But I know that my grandkids all have, um, a notebook. And I think that they could have programs on it that might be beneficial if they had studied how to use a tablet. If they were all set up to do certain learning programs.
Well, early, Caitlin, a lot of the kids, um, like Caitlin with that heartbeat had Kindles. I mean, even if you're not hooked up to the Wi-Fi, you still have books on them.
Which does, right, so I mean, they could actually bring their own, but against the way that it's set up now.
You're not like...
Not allowed to bring it at all.
Right, right.
And, um...
Misses Sturges was letting them bring them, but they were not, the school was not at all responsible, but see, they're not, they can't connect to the Wi-Fi. They were just for reading purposes.
That's how we have our setup for kids is that, um, there's permission laws along with it. They can't even access the internet, they can just use the games and stuff that are on there. So even though they walk into my house, you have Wi-Fi ready, but they can't do it, it has to be under parent's.
Why do they need a game available for them in the school?
A game?
You said, they, that's what you're...
Not necessarily need a game, but a learning program. They have a lot of different maps and different programs on there that are kinda set up like a game, but they're learning things.
District has many of those, huh?
In heartbeat, don't they all have laptops anyway?
They have.
Nope, it's, it's a netbook, yes, yeah.
Not laptops, but old netbooks that would be set up to, you have learning activities on them already.
So we're already kind of, well, I guess I'm curious because it says here that phone adopt because you're going to this handbook, but we're kinda doing some of that anyway, right?
No, the handbook says they're not supposed to be bringing their own devices.
Broken, they can be broken, they can be stolen. I know with some of the big issues, stealing them, where do they, you know, how do they keep them where they're not being stolen and the parent coming to the school, it's your fault.
And how does a teacher with three kids really control what they're doing on that?
I would say...
I would say angry words, let me tell you. I love angry words.
Well, that tells us.
I know, I would take it to it.
Well, I kind of agree though that we should at least look at it and see if there's something.
Cell phone and electronic devices personal property. Cell phones are allowed in schools. Cell phones may not be used or activated during school hours or on school buses. Their use, including text messaging and digital photography, is prohibited during the school day. Electronic devices personal property. Personal electronic devices are deemed potentially disruptive, deemed potentially disruptive, shall not be allowed at school. I don't know who makes that determination. Students bringing any electronic device for a class project must make arrangements with the teacher or principal for safekeeping. Teachers may approve the use of electronic devices for appropriate classroom-supported activity. Cell phone use is prohibited during the school day. Use is interrupted by using, use is interrupted by using any cell phone function or feature not just the sending or receiving of calls. Okay, this includes the use in the hallway, may not take a pass out of class to use their cell phone. Cell phones must be unsilent or turned off and kept out of sight. Cell phone use is not permitted during lunch. Cell phones must be unsilent or turned off and kept out of sight. Cell phone use is not permitted during lunch. Students who choose to use a cell phone will be referred for insubordination and the following disciplinary actions will occur, first offense, second offense, one month.
So, we're pretty clear. Is there anything you heard that's in this, that's not in there?
Well, this, this policy that press is bringing is going well beyond, you know, cell phones and, and, you know, it is, it is addressing specific electronic devices. Alright? If you're gonna use them, you have to bring, for a class project, you have to have arrangements. They may approve electronic devices for appropriate classroom-supported activities. What the policy has, is talking about is putting into place the restrictions on the use of the network and what the school district's responsibilities will be. We have to give professional development for teachers on the appropriate uses and classroom management information. You know, there are, in this policy, it talks about the responsible uses. So, it is, it's really geared toward those kind of devices that are, you know, accessible to the school's network. If we believe seven one ninety, cell phones, electronic devices, personal property in the school, uh, in the handbook addresses that, then that's fine. Um, you know, it's, I, I just don't know. I just bring this to you. I don't know that I have a really clear pedagogical reason for or against. That's why, that's why I was, you know, talking about a, a study with the staff to think about whether or not this would be even, you know, worth investigating further. I, I'm not sure. So.
So, if the children didn't have ones, would the school provide some children? Cause if they only have one or two kids in the classroom, who has it?
That would be the question that, that the board would have to struggle with is, is accessibility. This is, this policy is bring your own technology.
Right, just addressing that, not everything.
Yeah, responsible uses and contacts of those students who have it.
Well, it's not, if you want to use it, but when you're in the classroom, what are you gonna do if only one or two children have one?
Right, I mean, that, I don't know. That's, I'm just saying, that's why, you know, is it, is it an advantage or a disadvantage? Can we do it for all kids? Do all kids, you know, need to have it? I, I would leave that to the people who are gonna be dealing with it day to day, you know, which is the teaching staff, I guess.
Well, is it something as, you know, to learn such a technology age, is it something that we should do? Take further consideration?
Well, it's something that we can set aside and make that a, a study that the, you know, that we can bring information to the board and say, you know, if this is something that, you know, seems to be the trend or the wave of the classroom instruction in the future, you know, we'd be able to pick that type of research out and determine, you know, a position to bring to the board.
The reason why I bring that is because to buy a notebook, Kindle, it's a hundred and twenty-nine bucks. Some kids found it, some don't. Some kids have shoes that cost that much, you know? Well, I, I was just curious as to why we wouldn't allow that at some point in the future, maybe not right now, but I, I'm just curious.
And it is. I mean, that's why I think it is a good topic for study because there isn't much, well, I, I, I won't say that. It's not anything that I've looked into. I don't know what staff has done or looked into. Um, you know, we do provide some technology for our, for, um, for Parkview and in our junior high. Not so much at the elementary school. Um, but I will tell you that starting next year, we will have to have a technology infrastructure to do our ISAT testing for all of our kids in, in the coming years. Next year, it's just for our special education students who take the alternative testing. But the following year, all of our students, well, they'll roll it out grade by grade, I'm sure. They haven't said that, but I'm hoping. Uh, but we're gonna have to have the technology background to test our students. There will be no paper and pencil tests. It will be on the computer and our computer lab is inadequate. It, it won't sustain the testing situation.
They do it now?
Nope. Not, not, not.
Yes, test, math, test, math.
Math testing and A's, wins.
On ISAT. I've instructed them in that lab, um, um, they can go in and take a, a pre-test.
The tutorials?
The pre-test they can take.
Okay, alright. The.
That doesn't mean we don't have.
Well, the backbone, the backbone is not strong enough and then that's only one class at a time where you have to test each grade level at the same time, same days. All of that still is gonna be in place.
I don't know what school could go for. I've been in Morton, they don't have anything more than we do right here.
Yeah.
In fact, they have fewer, um, computers per classroom.
Or junior high's good, with the netbooks, right?
No, the netbooks are, are falling apart.
They've about, they've about got the life.
They've, they've reached their maximum sustainable life.
Rotate them by as they needed.
Let's talk to Miss Callahan about the netbooks.
They didn't buy?
You didn't buy?
I thought that's what they were supposed to do, replace the rest needed.
Okay, it didn't happen.
The monies ran out? The grant?
No, the grant money was spent all upfront. To purchase the technology.
So, we didn't have money.
There wasn't anything set aside for sustainability, right?
And then it'd fall apart. Oh, yeah, I mean, use every day.
How about if we all just have this and let them look into it, help with the staff? And then if we feel we need it in six months or a year, then review it?
I think they'll ask too. This just came out in March. So, I'm gonna guess there's a few.
They'll try it this year? Maybe we try it next year after they work the buds out. It's just like a new release.
They'll find problems with it. Well, I'm jumping ahead, but this is also very much related to the two, um, one six five, eight eight five about the privacy. Someone says here that we don't need it. But the business that I'm in and the insurance stuff, there's a whole bunch of new stuff coming down for technology, the back reach and all this stuff. And I'm thinking no matter if you allow the kids to bring technology to the school or not, at some point, this privacy, online privacy thing needs to be addressed with the parents. Or it leaves the school open for some legal stuff. And I know we can talk about that later. I think it just kind of all goes together.
E one and E two above that are specifically for the BYOP policy. So, my recommendation was hold for study, so we won't even discuss those, uh, cause they don't really relate. Now, E five, um, sec- sorry, um, policy number six colon two thirty-five, ex- uh, example five.
Five.
Exhibit five. Um, goes to Children's Online Privacy Protection Act and that's a new letter to the parents explaining the dangers to children on the websites and mobile applications. It's adopted from the Federal Trade Commission's report to school districts. Um, it's an optional and, you know, I had no real recommendation because it is an optional policy or optional letter that can be, um, adopted or not. So.
Can we go back to six two 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 two, probably? We're gonna save the study, right?
Save for study. Uh, I like that.
Agreed. I think that's why I'm turning off voices too.
So, now we get over, policy, six two four zero. And that too is instruction regarding field trips. Now, the press policy adds optional language regarding privately arranged trips such as, um, staff members leading field trips to foreign countries, um, you know, the, uh, that, and if they do that, then they're not gonna be represented as, you know, district or school trips, things like that. A lot of foreign language teachers at the secondary level, um, they organize these type of trips because then they get to go free. They get to go free. They get to travel free by taking a group of students. That's what that, it kind of addresses, saying that the district does not provide liability protection for these privately arranged trips. So, really, uh, and adds that optional section and, um, I didn't have a recommendation. Uh, I didn't know if we did privately arranged trips or not, or if it was even a consideration or anything that needed to be really addressed.
Well, last year, when, I, well, not last year, a couple of years ago, one of the teachers did arrange for the, this was spring bill for district. It was a field check bill.
Okay, privately arranged means in, in this regard, this is with a company, um, you know, a, a foreign language, uh, company to, to an excursionary trip to take kids to France. Yeah, okay. Yeah, if it's district-type money, even though the teacher may have done the arrangements, that's really not what this is addressing, that's all.
So, there is a little bit of change than what we had since May of two thousand and four. And it looks like it brings in a difference in that radius that was discussed last year. Around one hundred up to two hundred mile radius.
I think when it includes recreation, like it says here, because like when they go to.
Six Flags, yeah. And so, then it's approved by the school board in the new one.
At footnote number one regarding the recreational class trips. And insert one hundred mile radius that is in the current policy. And that's in the second paragraph, second line there. Must have superintendent dignity's prior approval, except that field trips beyond a one hundred mile radius of the school are extending overnight, must have prior approval by the Board of Education. This has a two hundred mile radius, uh, in the proposed press policy. So, I guess that is the question. Stay with one hundred? Or, yeah, stay with one hundred or go with two hundred? Keep the privately arranged or optional language or delete it and, um, add the recreational footnote. So, one, two are all right. Let's go, let's, okay, let's start with, let's start with, let's start with the radius.
Well, they're gonna go to St. Louis, that's more than a hundred miles.
Right, and that's what she's saying, they need permission for.
So, we leave the hundred miles as it was in the old policy.
Or the two hundred miles, what they're suggesting.
Only come to the board if it's over two hundred. If it's over two hundred. So, if it's two hundred and two miles, they have to get permission. If it's one hundred and ninety-nine, they do not.
St. Louis, Six Flags is over two hundred, isn't it?
I don't know, the policy was always a hundred.
I forgot.
I don't know.
No, I think it's a hundred and sixty-seven, actually. I think by my GPS, I, I know that sounds weird. I think it's a hundred and sixty-seven miles.
Okay, everybody wants a hundred miles.
A hundred and sixty-seven.
One hundred and sixty-eight miles, is that what I'm hearing?
I know that's weird that I, that I would have that in my head.
One hundred or two hundred?
Honestly, it doesn't matter to me. They go to the same place every year. I don't.
So, are we trying to say that we want to know where they're going? Is that?
We want to approve anything beyond a certain radius because when it goes, I guess, the thinking is that if it goes beyond that, there needs to be some more critical thought rather than, you know, um, Ms. Callahan saying, you know, I wanna take all my kids up to, you know, the Mall of America. And the Board of Education not knowing.
Right, but you can be out of state in two hundred miles. Do you wanna know if your students go out of state?
Yeah, I think that.
But you're still getting parental permission. It's not like she's taking them all without any parents knowing.
Does the board wanna know that a group of students are out of state?
Yes.
And they'll stay with a hundred.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
This privately, privately arranged trips, that's more like going to France or someplace like that.
So, we can take it out, like you said.
Is it?
Or is it?
I'm gonna have a party at my house and invite my whole class to come over.
No, it's a privately arranged trip by a company. That's what he said.
Okay, um, we're going to all meet down at the park. Is that an arranged trip?
There's a whole other policy.
This language, this language seeks, this language seeks to distinguish privately arranged trips from those that are controlled and sponsored by the district and provides a disclaimer. So, those that are controlled and sponsored by the district as opposed to the teacher saying, hey, everybody come down to, you know, Giant City State Park. You know, that's not controlled or sponsored by the dis.
That's what's kind of hard too.
Well, yeah, yeah, let's see. Let's not mix our metaphors and stick with, one policy issue at a time, sorry.
The school district will not cover it, where this one is covered by the school district. Harm, if harm comes, it's insurance on the school.
So, we need this in Marana? I'm hearing both. Do we need this privately arranged trips in or no?
I guess we, it wouldn't hurt to keep it in just in case someone came out and said, hey, can I arrange a trip through a company to take us to.
Cause if you don't address it, then you can do it without.
Exactly.
Cause it's within that hundred miles.
Right, yeah.
Where, where are you in?
Cause we're going to Star Rock and I'm gonna get a free trip and a free.
When I was in junior high, we went on an overnight seven.
Did you know?
Now, we have the student council come to the board and ask permission to take the children on the night trip.
But it was all after, it was all done outside of school, it's not like having to do it.
Cause if.
Your science fair did an overnight several years ago.
To go to the science fair in DeKalb? It does happen. You don't have anything in here? I mean, give me the opportunity to consider that, I don't know.
This is if it's overnight, yes, and a. Yes.
Or extending overnight, must have prior approval. Okay, you're good. Consensus about adopting the private trip language?
Are you gonna add the recreational class trip to the heading then?
That was the next one. No, none of them, first, getting ahead of me. But this is an optional policy, the recreational class trip. Uh, the following is an optional section for including class trips. Add, add to the bottom of the policy and, and add, and recreational class trips to the policy's title. So, recreational class trips are permissible, providing that they do not interfere with the district's educational program. The provision in this policy concerning field trips, except those regarding educational value, are also applicable to recreational class trips. So, all of this policy restrictions also apply to, excuse me, recreational class trips. It's my expectation that any trip that a teacher is planning this year will have some educational value to it and not be a purely recreational, uh, setting. It's, if we're having and the district is paying for transportation to a site, then the main thrust of that field trip has to be articulated as having some kind of educational purpose. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't have fun and that they can't go to the park and eat their lunch and play on the playgrounds. That's not what I'm saying. But, you know, just to go to, um, you know, Wally World because is not an appropriate use of, of district funds. It needs to be educationally based. That's my expectation. That's what the principals know and that's what I'm expecting them to, to relate to their staff this year. Is that it's not gonna be just purely fun trips. I wanna, I want there to be. That's also one of the things that is on my discussion list with the parents' organization and anything that, that they may want to devise and plan and develop. I've asked them, that my expectation is that it be educationally based. So, I, there's not much control over them as much as there is, you know, our staff. So.
Life skills. So, what about Six Flags? Life skills. Life skills classes are taken to Wally World to price things out.
Oh, I guess Wal...
Walmart.
Not Wally World.
Steve was talking about Wally World.
Like Six Flags.
The movie, the movie Wally World.
Vacation where they go to Wally World and go, Six Flags.
You're right, that's an educational.
Right there, they could spend an hour or two.
How much?
No, they don't do that, Six Flags, they go, they pay for it themselves.
They sell candy bars.
I think that's the difference, is if we're using educational funds, as opposed to a class trip where the class raises the money, then that's different.
So, that's why, they can still use recreational for that, but just not the school money.
Right.
Six Flags.
Right. If they wanna go to Six Flags, and they wanna use my buses, they gotta pay for my gas.
They rent charters, they want to.
Or whatever, if they want, then they're paying for it, yeah.
But if you still want the rest of this policy to apply to that trip, wouldn't you want this in there?
Yeah. And that's, and that's fine. And footnote number one. Consensus, I'm hearing? All right.
Everybody's done.
Okay. Eight, colon, two, five. Look at that, okay, this is here. Hmm, Community Relations? We just did that one, Field Trips.
Yeah.
Got all of those, and, so, eight, eight, colon, two, five, is Community Relations. And this is Advertising and Distributing Materials in School. The press recommends change that they must have prior superintendent approval before posting or distributing. The recommendation is either the board or the superintendent to approve outside materials, posted or distributed in the school. Now, authorizing the superintendent to do this expedites the process, um, but I believe one or the other should approve anything that is being brought in or, or submitted by an outside entity, company, organization, privately, you know, private organization, whatever. Anything that's coming in here needs to be approved by somebody going out, and not just the building principal or the secretary. So, um, with that, um, there was suggestion of inserting footnote number four, so that only the Board of Education approves commercial and political advertisements, and then the designated party. There is a strike through, um, there are a couple of strike throughs that is just language cleanup. But there is also, you know, I, I had question of, you know, prior approval is needed from superintendent for advertisements on athletic, theater, or music programs, student newspapers and yearbooks, and any commercial materials related to graduation, class pictures or rings. We don't do rings, obviously. Well, wait a minute, do we do rings, class rings? Okay. So, we do have class pictures and some graduations, so. So, um, approval in advance, and then footnote number four is, commercial advertising may be accepted without making the school a forum for all types of expressive activity. If the board does not want to sell advertising space, use the following alternative. Um, list of places where commercial companies may purchase space, sample policy requires board approval only for ads that alter the living school property. A board that wants to approve all commercial and political ads should use this alternative for the final two sentences, which is these. Prior board approval is needed for all commercial and political advertisements. A board that wants to authorize the superintendent to do that would use the next sentence, prior approval from superintendent is needed. So, um, it's just a matter of comfort level. It does not matter to me which way the board wants to go. Uh, I just, I just think that when I get flyers, or have gotten flyers for, uh, Fodlack Park District tumbling class signups for the fall, all right? I got that, you know, last week, it would be September twenty-fourth, before it came to the board, which is after their registration deadline, all right? It would take a year or so for the organizations to figure out they need to get into us at least more than thirty days in advance, um, but they would be upset for that first year when they're told no, or it has to wait for board approval. That's the only thing that really...
In our building, that we do?
That they do what?
It's at home, where they have it.
Oh. Yes, it is. Uh, but anything else, okay, Pee Wee Football from East Peoria.
Well, East Peoria Baseball, we never quit, I notice there's enough time to even have a play for the board, we have some kids to have to put down in the classroom. And I can't imagine as quick as it puts that together, we can involve groups that who would get it and not know it is the first school, you know.
So, you're suggesting who approves these that are coming in?
That it be the superintendent's approval.
The law, running?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're, we would go with the very last one? Yeah. Very last line.
Why would you just take out political, that says there's no political advertisement in this district? And then, all other advertisements, yes, you know.
What if they're trying to promote something that's a benefit to the district?
Like the tax levy?
Yeah.
Like a tax levy. That's political.
It's still political, and you, some board members might not agree with it, so I would say no, or can't do it anyway.
Yeah, there is, it is very specific on that type of issue, but let's say Raymond Poe, I'll just step around here, but Raymond Poe is running for, you know, state senator, and he wants to send something out to all the voter, registered voters in, that have children in our school district. He sends his flyer to us and asks for us to distribute it. Is that something the board wants to be involved in, or is that something that the superintendent could just say no? Um, or do we just say, you know, forget it? No commercial publications shall be posted or distributed unless their purpose is to further a school activity such as graduation or class pictures, et cetera.
No, I meant no political advertisement, not commercial.
Okay.
I mean, you still keep it commercial and do what you need to do, but just take out all political advertisement.
Yeah, we don't even have political advertisement in the current policy.
Right.
Keep, keep that and add the commercial aspect?
Yeah. Otherwise, we're going with hell new one. But taking out political, no political advertisement in the school.
That's probably wise.
What about these sentence material from candidates and political parties will not be accepted for posting or distributing? You want that one out, too?
Political, right? Well, no, don't we keep that in there, that they can't do that?
Okay, except when used as part of the curriculum.
Just, oh.
Otherwise, a candidate's coming in and saying, as a candidate, they're bringing in a, a picture of a political figure, but he's gonna present his political...
Well, I have a question, so then, anything political, then is that put out, or people come to the school board and things like that, is that considered political?
Yes.
It's already a policy.
Yeah, that's true.
But they have, they have the building open for that, okay?
Well, that's different, that's voting, that's not advertising.
But we can, no, and you can have forums, when you're not, you're not, you're not making any differentiation between any candidate. So, what's that?
Campaigns should not be allowed.
All right, this is political advertisement, that's what I've got.
Okay, but we are gonna leave that in there then, about the, when used as part of the curriculum, leave that part in?
Where you say it.
Under Commercial, third sentence down. Just questioning, like, do you leave it in or take it out? Third paragraph then.
Material from candidates and political parties will not be accepted for posting or distribution, except when used as a part of a curriculum.
Well, I see what they do that before, because they, like, did mock, um... Mock elections. Right, with the president. They did do mock elections.
What's used for school?
Right.
Right, that's what it says, excepted used for part of the curriculum. Should we put, like, more?
For posting or distribution. If they're coming in to present, um, like in social studies, this is our democratic process.
It doesn't say anything about the candidates, though, it just says material from.
Right, right.
It doesn't say that the candidate themselves can come in.
It doesn't limit the candidate coming in.
The candidate can't come in.
They just can't pass anything out.
The candidate can't come in, that's campaigning.
Yeah. This is just, like, if they wanted to bring an Obama sign in and post it in their classroom.
Right, the material, right, yes.
When it's used as a part of the curriculum?
Yes, 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 for their mock. And you would hope that they would have one for whoever else.
Right.
McCain, I think. Oh, and so the guy on the corner.
Guy on the corner.
All right, so, in the current policy, distribution and display of community flyers and posters, that's our current policy, eight, two, five. All right?
I thought we weren't going with that. I thought we're going with the new one.
So, we're going with the new one?
Yes.
Okay. Completely, and we are leaving in that section. So, the board wants to authorize the superintendent to approve all commercial and political ads use that alternative.
All commercial, period, don't wanna say no political advertisement.
Period, we just, period. Because it's already interesting. There, good, oh, excellent.
Can we take a break?
Taking a break?
It's hard to be good.
Yeah.
All right, one, two, three, four. Man, we're, we're cruising.
All right.
Come back into session.
Come back into session.
Okay, um, the next two, um, exhibits have to do with the BYOT, so we're just gonna leave those sit. So, that brings our next one to six, two, three, five, Exhibit Five. And this is regarding the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, and this, this page I brought up. Um, this is a new letter that explains the dangers to children about websites and mobile applications. It's, it's page one of one. Is everybody there?
No.
Okay.
At the moment.
No problem.
I'm going to six point two, three, five.
Yes.
It's pretty far back.
It's E five, yeah, it is, it is. It does say new at the top. Nope, keep going. Two, three, five, six, colon, two, three, five, Exhibit Five. Within the Tri, the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, there are a number of notifications that we have to give to parents regarding the dangers of the internet. Even though they probably know, you know, specifically a lot of different things, the school district is still required to make these kind of notifications to the, to the parents. Um, this is an optional letter, um, so, my recommendation was, if it's not an issue in the district that we not adopt the letter, because it's just another thing that we would have to do at registration, and send home, or give to the parents, it's another piece of paper, well, it's another seven hundred and eighty-six pieces of paper plus that we have to give out. I don't know that it's necessary, and there were suggestions that do not feel that it's, that this is necessary, but also, there was another suggestion that we adopted as written, so that's why it's here.
They have that numbered.
But this is the, this is the exhibit to this policy. So, this would be an exhibit. This would be, we would copy this letter verbatim, put it on district letterhead, and send it, or give it to every child or parent, guardian.
But we don't have to.
We do not, it is an option.
We have another problems. We have their individual, and the principal's accepting.
We have an acceptable use policy, too, that probably contains a lot of this.
Well, what happens, though, when a child comes on the property, the school property, and they're not in school yet, and they're using their phone, and they have access to the internet, and they show another kid some game or whatever, and it goes to the internet, they see something inappropriate, this other kid.
You mean if they're on the bus, make it on the bus?
No, I'm talking about, yeah, in between the bus and the school, or, not even on the bus, they're just walking home, they're still technically on the school grounds. I don't know, I'm thinking, maybe we should, the guys are on transit, but, I think if we don't have something in place that's signed by the parents, or the letter notification has come out, that, I think we leave ourselves open for...
Well, they're not connecting to the school wifi, because I can sit right outside.
Does it say that?
I can sit out, right out front and wait.
Not this letter specifically, but we have all their notifications, I'm sorry.
Is that a password, though?
I don't.
Well, I don't, I don't know technically, it has to be something, if they're hooking up to our online, they're just hooking up online.
You tell me how a policy that they can't use their cell phones, our school property, on the bus, we do, we have that, you just read it from the parent handbook.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, even though it's part of the policy, the school still could be possibly going to sue because of it.
We have an acceptable use policy.
Would that protect us in studying?
That is, that is, that's your, that's your number one defense. All of these notifications, these are exhibits, and they're letters and notices that are sent out to parents regarding, um, children's protection. This letter specifically has to do with mobile applications and password protection, and telling the parents that, you know, set up family rules and consequences, explaining that all purchases made via a smartphone or computer must have parent or guardian consent. It's things that are really now, I think, real common knowledge. The, the issues that, that you're addressing, the policy, the policy itself really gets to the legal aspect of this, and, and our acceptable use policy is, is signed by every parent and student, saying that they will abide by the rules, and they're laid out for them, and then if they do those kind of things, they are subject to the disciplinary code. That covers us as, as much as we can be with, you know, those kind of issues, yes.
And as Mrs. Greiner mentioned earlier, with another one that was new, it might be de must, um, to wait and see what happens.
This is, this is another pushdown from the Federal Trades Communication, Federal Trades Commission, about, you know, we think the internet is a bad place, so we have to protect children all over, from everything, and kids could care less.
Well, especially if we do, if we do adopt one of your own technology, we might want to adopt this.
Then we would, we would look at those kind of things, sure, so. Yep. Yeah, study, poll, however you wanna appraise that. Very good. Six, one, seventy, uh, Administrative Procedure One, Exhibit One, is kinda going backwards, I apologize for that, um, let's go back in the policy. Six, one, seventy. Really, so I'm gonna back, hang on a minute. Okay.
It's, it's not back, the, 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 yeah, it's in the act, it's in...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in the instruction.
Yeah, it is, it is toward... Yeah, it is, it is toward the back, I, I said go backwards, but I meant. To the back. Sorry. Lot of policies, lot of policies. And this is about Title One. Six, one, seventy, AP one. It's administrative procedure, it's a checklist for developing and implementing the parent involvement compacts for Title One programs. So this is a checklist for, um, administration to use, both superintendent and the principals, to make sure that we have meaningful consultation with the parents. Because there are, um, there are notices and we are required under the Title One grant to have and ensure parent involvement in, um, in our schools. When we're talking about, you know, the instruction and, um, having that, that communication as a two-way street. This is giving us a checklist of the legal requirements that are in our Title One grant to make sure that we don't miss something and we get dinged for it if we would have an audit for, uh, our Title One grant funds. So it's just a, it's a checklist for, you know, to make sure that administration has gone ding, 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 ding. Have we done it? Notify interested parents of meeting dates to discuss, um, you know, students participating in Title One programs, agendas, just making sure that we're, we're doing what is required of us under the grant. So it's a checklist.
So that would completely take the place of what we have.
No, this is okay.
This is just a, an administrative procedure that tells us how to go about doing the parent involvement parts here. This is giving us a checklist to make sure we don't miss any of those, yeah. Right, yeah, it is in addition to that policy, so.
And I'm confused because it says at the bottom that bulleted items are merely ideas and each district should, with parents, develop its own process. Very bottom, page one.
Footnote should be reviewed, administrative procedure should be used along with, but only by those districts receiving Title One funds. Revise applicable parental involvement compacts if necessary.
Page one.
Very, very bottom of the first footnote. Bulleted items are merely ideas, each district must, with parents, develop its own process for accomplishing everything listed.
Oh, AP one, A one, or E one, I'm sorry, the exhibit. Alright, there's E one, there's AP one and then there's AP one dash E one. So there's, yeah, there's two different, there's two different things here. I think it was like poll. We did E two, I believe, no, there's E two. Six, one, that's six, one, seventy, E two, E one, E two.
Same reason.
Uh, well, if, right, if, if we adopted it, I didn't put it into my, my summary, cause I kept them, kept them separate. So, alright, going to Ms. Greiner's. But only those, okay, the bulleted items are merely ideas, each district must, with parents, develop its own process for accomplishing everything listed. Okay, so. It says recommend adopting as presented, the exhibit is a guideline for developing the compacts. Alright, while they are merely ideas, each district should, with parents, develop its own process for accomplishing everything listed. Okay, well. I would, I would like to have ideas. Whether we put it in our own, our own words or we, you know, adopt, or, yeah, adopt this whole cloth. I would rather have these ideas in place, so that I have something to start with, rather than me having to go back and try to figure out where all of this stuff came from within the grant and within the federal regulations and the law.
But which one? There's five different ones that are, I guess I'm lost now, because there's five different ones, all of them are a little bit different. One of two, one of two, one of three, two, um.
Yeah, AP, E one. And there's E two, right? And six, one, seventy, AP two, which is different. So, we're looking at the parent involvement compact, which is district level parent involvement compact. And then the next one, E two, is school level parental involvement compact. So it goes from the district down to the school, or down to the school building.
Administrative, then district, then school level.
Right.
That's why there's three.
Right, the AP is the checklist, then the exhibit is the, you know, the actual notice in the compact itself from the district, the compact from the school building, the school, school level and how the schools will have the parents be involved in the notifications, or, I'm sorry, in the whole issue of having parents be involved in a Title One school. So.
Do you think it's necessary that we leave PTO or should we change that to parent group? I don't know how precise that is.
Engaging the building PTOs, parent teacher organization. Yeah, I don't think that we have to put in or change it to, to any specific acronym. If we just put parent group, that would be fine, um, I, it doesn't really matter so much to me and I don't think legally it really has, has much significance. You know, taking it out is, is fine with, with parent group or, you know, I would rather put something more generic than to put something specific in case it changes in two years. That would be my only suggestion.
Okay, so we're gonna basically use this as a guideline to get started and then as you see how it works, you'll revise us then?
If, yes, if we go down and we see, you know, it is a joint responsibility of the district and the parents to improve students' academic achievement and school performance. To that end, the district provides opportunities for parents and guardians' involvement in the, at the district level, but. And then here's, here are the things that we will do or take under, uh, take under study, whatever it is they're asking us to do here. And if, if some of these need to change, it can be a working document, cause it is an exhibit, um, you know, the real intent is to make sure that parents are getting the involvement, you know, develop a district newsletter to communicate with parents about the plan and seek their input and participation. It's a matter of a back and forth between the parents and the school district. This gives us a roadmap essentially, um, and, and, you know, the bulleted items. We, meeting with the parents to develop our own process, you know, if this isn't working, I'm sure the parents are going to let us know. Or if we find that we're not getting the type of responses that we need from parents that are required under the Title One Act.
So Claire.
We can change those.
We have one page currently with that number, we're going to nine pages.
There, we don't have any APs or, or exhibits right now?
Yeah, no.
You don't have anything?
No, just, this, this is what we got, here.
So.
This is ten years old.
It's early, maybe something in the twenties, even fall.
Yeah, it's.
Two thousand and three. Six, one, seven.
Not that it wasn't good, but this is now a lot of happenings later.
Alright, oh, this was amended in about November two thousand and five, this is a little more current. We have administrative procedure for no child left behind, which had all of the dates that we have, we had to meet certain requirements under no child left behind. So that's there and that's the end of it.
Mr. Albee. For the past several years, the board hasn't received APs or exhibits to put in their book. Will we, we, we be receiving those now?
I have no idea, this, this is, no, this is, this is Stephanie's book, this isn't, this is, mine was wholly incomplete. This is Stephanie's book, so I don't know if we have.
We had colored ones last time, remember? We gave us colored ones last time. She had them on a different color so we could insert them and take out the old.
That's temporary. APs should be blue, exhibits should be green.
Yeah, I don't have any.
And we always had those.
I mean, is that something that you guys created?
Do you know what they are?
Well, I never got anything to replace the paints, I thought it was just so I knew which ones were new.
You're supposed to get white to replace the paint. But from now on, my question is, will the board be receiving those to put in their policy?
I have to get a policy.
You don't have one?
No. Somebody's, um, trying to hear something, I haven't heard.
Well. Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, I mean, obviously, if you have board policy handbooks, since it is your board policy, you should have.
APs and exhibits.
You should have a complete set, I don't have any problems.
I do have APs and APs.
You do?
I do.
In six, one, seventy?
There probably are. Yeah, I have APs and APs and worse.
I've got AP three and that's all in this book. And this, this is kinda disturbing since. This is, this is the board secretary, well, this was Stephanie's book and, okay, so, alright. Uh, I am sure that we have them on my flash drive, so, um, you know, let's go through it, check it and, you know, at the next board meeting, I'm just gonna burn the disc so that everybody has a CD of all of the policies, you know, and straight up has it all. Or do you want, would it be better, it would be better to wait until we have all this, all this approved and everything, September twenty-fourth, and then I can bring a disc for everybody to have?
Our copy's probably this one right before.
Well, we can't.
But honey, I'm, can we hold this until we see what we had already or?
I think this one seems good.
I think it's good. I didn't know if you wanted to change it or not.
Right, they all have to turn back in. That is a huge ask.
Well, he has more.
Well, it's not in this book, I'm sure it's on.
This was copied off a monitor.
Well, the policy is mandatory, um, because we do receive Title One funds, alright? We, under the, under the grant, we have to have a parent compact and parent group involvement. So that's what all of this stuff is for. If you've adopted stuff in the past, let me, let me do, let me do this to expedite the whole process. Cause here's AP, here's AP three. Okay, we have, you have that one, let me go through and cross-reference, see what we have and don't have for policy six, one, seven, zero. And we'll just wait so that everybody can take a look at everything that is to make this policy complete, how's that? That way you don't, you know, nobody's voting on anything that they've never seen before and you can have, you know, we can, we can add this policy to the group that I just received and we can move forward from there, how's that? Does it sound appropriate?
Does it have an issue with the same name?
No, I think we're okay with it.
Yeah, it's okay with our mind with you.
We're okay. It must be a man, woman thing. We're not on the same page here.
Okay, so, E one.
E four is good, yes.
How about E two?
Good.
Good, alright, bottom, bottom, alright.
As long as it's a working document that you'll change appropriately, if you do or do not do some of these things, I'm good with it.
Okay. Six, two, forty, AP. I just made more work for myself, I'm sorry. Alright, six, two, forty, AP, construction. It's near, it's almost the last policy. Yeah, it's almost the last one there, and this is the last one that we will discuss because that's the end of the.
Six, two, four.
Mm-hmm, six, two, forty, AP, construction, field trips guideline, field trips guideline. It's a language cleanup and grammatical edits, um, not much difference. The only thing that makes sense is since we adopted the recreational class trip and the two, uh, the one hundred miles, put them in the appropriate areas and insert them in with where they should be, how's that?
I have a question, sorry. I heard, um, the first part says action number four supervision plans that include among other things plans for at least two adult supervisors to be present with every grouping of students, do we wanna say what a grouping is? I mean, I know the high school does, but, I mean, a grouping could be forty kids.
So you're saying two or more students?
No, do you want two adults every twenty kids?
With how many, how many kids, how many students?
I don't know.
No, okay, that's fine, I know the high school.
Because, I know, but it could be different for say first grade than eighth grade. You know, first grade.
Might want a five.
Right, you don't want any more than, I'm sorry, I don't wanna go on a first grade field trip with more than four kids under my, you know, supervision cause they're crazy, but eighth graders.
You'll take ten.
I'll take ten, yeah.
Okay, what about twenty?
I would not take twenty, but you know, you can't really.
So that's working out with the teacher?
Yeah.
Saying I'm not comfortable with more than, I don't want more than, I really don't want little Johnny. You know, those kind of thing.
Frankie.
You know, keep the two of them apart, or I don't want him in my group.
This is what I was saying, we just need to make sure that there's adequate supervision on any given year.
Right.
We're seeing.
We have to turn parents away usually.
Okay.
I think.
Cause they won't, they won't be. I'm not sure.
I think, you know, the teachers do a good job, I mean, I've not been on a field trip where.
That's fine, I just didn't know.
And they do try to separate students that.
The high schools want ten. Yes, I, I know when it's too, um, Chicago, they had one ten. Elena fans.
I don't think you'd want a lesson now.
Well, I don't know how many we have with those six boys. Cause nobody knows, it's just teachers. And four, four teachers, so how many kids?
Sixteen.
Parents don't go on the bus usually.
They don't go on the bus. And that's, that's true.
But thirty-sixteen. There's only sixty-seven.
But they don't, they don't know, they don't know about, last year, I have to raise money.
And there's also grades involved, isn't there?
No.
Not for that trip.
Graduating, you have to graduate.
Usually behaviors in there.
I think they almost did it where you know last year. I think they always just support you, you know, last year.
Well, Board of Education, that brings us to the end of our policy review for this lump of policies. Sharpen your pencils for next month as I will present to you the next installment from press. Uh, but I appreciate the, I appreciate the input and the process. You know, this is, this is what the Board of Education, like Dr. Langley was saying, this is what the board should be doing. And, you know, that's, that's where, you know, the, the real work comes in. So I appreciate that and I do, um, give you a lot of credit for sitting through these kind of meetings and wading through this stuff.
I have a request. For the new policies, it's the new batch that just came out. Could you give us a copy of the current one since, along with the new one? Because all of our policy manuals don't seem to be half the same policy. Not all have been updated, so could you give us an old and a new? Would that be too much?
I can have Stephanie do that.
At least we'd all be on the same page, I mean.
And Mrs. Reagan doesn't have a manual yet, so.
No, so when I email him, I'm emailing him, it's like, yeah, we have it.
I wrote it down.
Sorry. I didn't know that you didn't have one.
And, yeah, this is probably, are you emailing me, that's where we have it.
We did not have an audience participation, couldn't we do that?
Oh, I thought, I thought you did.
We, we had those, not on the agenda.
No, I thought, I thought you made the, made the announcement or. Oh, oh, you think they're, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't listening that hard. Okay, I will make that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean you have to sit the whole, you know, um, I thought it was stinking.
Actually, I, I like it at the end anyways, because I know what's happened. I mean, make me sit here and wait. It doesn't bother me. I've spent a lot of time on that side. Randy Giddens, eight twenty-one South Creek Court Avenue. And the reason why I, I'm glad I got to speak now, so the beginning is some of the things you did discuss and I'd like for you to sleep on is like student grades and participating in all the extracurricular, not just sports, but you've got your chess club, your scholastic bowls and everything else. What about that child that breaks his arm that week, can't participate in gym, gets an A complete? Does it get the complete at that regional scholastic bowl or chess club? You know, function, things like that. So there's a lot to weigh in there. Policy's real important, the written policy's real important to me, because when I read that and if I see an administrator not following that policy, it's like, why not? We want the kids to follow the rules, I want the adults to set an example. And, you know, consider, should the policy on academics be the core subjects? What are the core subjects? Reading, writing, arithmetic? You know, think about it. Also, I believe everybody who comes to my country and wants to live here should learn English, but I also know there's people just recently moved here, maybe struggling. English is the second language. They may be doing academically well, having problems with grammar. Do we prevent that child from participating in the other extracurricular activities? And that's where I come up with, Mr. Jokic mentioned back in January, he could have used some more tutoring. This year helps you identify some of the students that may need some more tutoring in other areas. So if we're going to say, we want your grids to come up to participate, offer these students, instead of going to basketball practice or whatever practice, you're setting in some tutoring. That's something to consider. I mean, the board sets the policy, the administration, you know, implements it. So if you would please consider that, I wouldn't have talked about that if it hadn't been for tonight's meeting. And, and also thank you for the information that was with the agenda. I could kind of follow along instead of sitting here, wondering what they're talking about and what can we talk about next. This is great, this is wonderful, okay? Congratulations with whoever's, including this, the audience, okay? Um, also congratulations, I, I skipped through parts of your last meeting. I understand our scores are coming up on the ISATs. I know, I know they changed the grading scale this year, but that's the direction that we should be going in. Uh, helping these kids and doing whatever we have to do. Um, and I completely support that. The other topic real quickly, you've got your budget, uh, on the September twenty-fourth, and there were some things I'm looking back at, and it's close to that Litchfield building, is how did you pay for the Litchfield building? I looked at last year's budget and it's renovations and the only line it plays for renovations is lines twenty-five thirty. And you're gonna find that expenditures in operations and maintenance or like in new construction and things like that. I looked at last year's budget and I thought I seen in, under the construction, that's how you were gonna pay for the renovations. However, at the end of the year, you have all this money left in there. So the board may want to know, you have rules that you have to follow and you're responsible for those rules. If you didn't take it out of the only line you can, what line, where did you get the money from? Where was the money used? Do you need to take any corrective actions? Also, I think I heard from the video, skipping through, that, uh, right now in its own line twenty-five thirty, I believe, I should have checked your new budget, that you're returning like a hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for this energy efficiency grant that wasn't used. Now, that's something I told you all the year ago, I was following because too much misinformation was out there. That grant was for about two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars approximately. It wasn't quite two fifty. You use twenty-five thousand, maximum you could use, if you look at the grant, twenty-five thousand at Litchfield. That's it. You couldn't go over twenty-five thousand dollars from the grant, okay? So, uh, the two forty-nine, you've used twenty-five for Litchfield. The other part of the grant paid for the roofing at La Salle School. I remember the quote was about approximately sixteen thousand. Again, the grant could only cover half, so that'd be eight thousand dollars. The other thing that energy grant covered was approximately twelve thousand dollars, eleven to twelve thousand dollars for the air conditioning over at Parkview, that's six thousand dollars. That means that the energy grant, all the energy grant could cover was approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars. So you, your budget, you saying you only have to return a hundred and eighty-six, a hundred and eighty-seven? You're gonna have to receive, return over two hundred thousand, and I know they mentioned something about going, um, interest. Now, I also know from stuff, there's some things that was put on receipts that wasn't really part of the energy grant. I know it was put, energy grant, you know, charged to the energy grant. However, I don't know if the checks were cut for that. But if you think back and look at what you voted on, what the grant covers, you've only spent less than forty thousand dollars, so you've, you should be, unless something's wrong with the math. The board is responsible for getting it right. If somebody has submitted stuff that, under that grant, that shouldn't have been, it's the board's responsibility to correct that. Seven. And also, one last thing, on the district website, you talked about the technology and stuff like that. Please look up on the district website, on the district page, I believe it is, look up your digital technology plan. Would the board members read that? And Mr., some of those goals look a hundred percent, you're not, that's not obtainable. But if you would, just take a peek through that. I have no comments about it, just asking you to look at it and give it some thought. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
We need a motion, please, to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Martha Bailey.
Eric Pye.
Pam Crainer.
Hi.
Brenda Cable.
Hi.
Rebecca Kern.
Hi.
Valerie Reagan.
Hi.
Judy Strong.
Yes.